We're going to open the meeting. Start to pledge allegiance. Mr. Zagby, can you lead?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the people of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Anybody hearing as citizens, anybody who'd like to speak? I don't see anybody. We'll move on to the intergovernmental cooperation agreement and MOU between Erie Land Bank and Erie School District. Randy?
For your consideration for the board meeting for next week, a lot of you have heard about the Erie Land Bank and the Erie County Land Bank. So what we've done is Darlene Feeny has been a part of, a member of the Erie Land Bank, part of their board. This is a group that has got together to help with the blight in the city. It's not a fix-all by any means, but it's kind of another tool in the pocket to help help our current situation. We've asked Mr. Henry to come on board today to join us just to give us a quick two or three-minute overview of what this is exactly. We understand that this is just getting off the ground now here in the city. It's going to maybe require another memorandum of understanding down the road, but this is kind of the first step that we want to explore with the board.
Okay, thanks. For anyone who doesn't know, I'm Scott Henry. I'm the director of the City's Redevelopment Authority and also working for the Erie Land Bank, which is the Erie City Land Bank. And it's been a couple of years since I've been here to talk to the school board about the concept of land banking. So just real briefly, a land bank was a tool provided by the Pennsylvania Legislature for municipalities and counties as an alternate method to deal with blight within the city. You know, it's what the Redevelopment Authority does. The land bank has some functions and powers that the Redevelopment Authority does not, most notable of which is the ability to intercede in the county's judicial tax sale, where the land bank can purchase properties directly from the county without purchasing them at the public auction. And the land bank can then turn around and do what needs to be done with the properties, whether that's demolish the building because it's in deteriorated condition, rehabilitate it to create homeownership opportunities, convey it to others for rehabilitation. There's lots of possibilities there. Obviously, the goal was to stabilize and improve the tax base over the long term. There are some short-term benefits in that if the property values increase, the school district realizes additional cash from royalty transfer taxes, and it realizes that's not a big chunk of money, but it is one of the short-term benefits. As Mr. Petroni mentioned, the school board does have a seat at the table on the land bank board. It was designed that way so that the school district always has a seat at the table on the land bank board. And even outside of that, the land bank is very open to discussions, conversations, cooperation between the school district and the land bank. We really want this to be a partnership. It's, you know, one of the cautions I would give you is don't get misled by the terminology "bank." There is no intention to start banking properties. When the land banks first came into existence 20 years or so ago, it was seen as a mechanism where a city could bank properties for future development, but as I think you'll find in most cases throughout the country, those, you know, it's very much, the goal is to recycle properties quickly back into productive use, not to sit on them. And we realize there's not going to be a short-term change in the market demand for properties within the city of Erie, but we want to get them into productive use as that is. So the intergovernmental agreement that we've presented is based primarily on outlines from the legislation. It's not a whole lot different, I don't think, than the relationship that the school district has had with the Redevelopment Authority, at least over the past few years. You know, the land bank has some powers granted to it in the legislation and through the city's ordinance and through agreement with the county, where the land bank could, if necessary, abate delinquent taxes on a property. That is not true in the case of the school district. In the case of the school district, the land bank would still need to come to the school board and say, you know, "We want to get forgiveness of the taxes against this specific property." And that's pretty much the process that the Redevelopment Authority has been using with the school board over the last few years. The one thing that is new in this agreement to what has been business as usual is that in this agreement, the school district pledges 50% of the taxes that are collected on a property that has been conveyed by the land bank for a period of five years. So for example, if the land bank purchases the property at the judicial tax sale this year and then sells that property to a private entity in, say, January, for the next five years, the taxes that are collected on that property would be split 50% between the land bank and the school district. And I've had some conversations with the administration about how that will work procedurally. I think we have a general idea of how that will work, although we're open, this is new to all of us, and we certainly realize that there's going to, we'll have to refine those processes as we go forward and really get our feet wet. There's no out-of-pocket expense in the immediate basis to the school district, and there's no commitment on the school district to provide any funding for property acquisition, for property maintenance, demolition, any of those types of things. The only financial aspect really is that allocation of taxes over the next, over the five-year period after the land bank can raise a property. And I think that does two things. Number one, it helps provide a little bit of financial sustainability to the land bank, but it also incentivizes them to get properties back on the tax boards because it works out best for both entities then. It kind of dispels the, "Well, let's just give it to this group that's not going to pay taxes, going to put it in a community garden." There may be instances where that's the only solution for a property, but I think the land bank is incentivized to get those properties back into taxable productive use. The other thing I would mention is that the land bank has wide-ranging powers in terms of real estate acquisition, management, disposition. The City Land Bank is very committed to focusing on deteriorated and troubled properties. There isn't a desire on the part of the board to go out and purchase properties that can do well for themselves on the private market. And to keep that in check, the school district has a seat at the table. There also is a, there's a reolder on the land bank board, and I mean, and I've heard them have this conversation many times, they don't want to interfere with the private marketplace. But there is a subset of properties, as we all know, that oftentimes recycle themselves through the tax foreclosure process, don't generate additional tax revenue, continue to deteriorate, and we really need to start working to put a stop to that. So I don't know, I'm open to any questions you might have? Okay. Well, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
And we look forward to working with the school district and turning some things around in the city.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
If you don't need anything else, I'll get out of your way. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Save Schools grant update, Ms. Devlin?
Thanks, Mr. Petroni. I did provide a handout to everyone. I didn't do a slide just because I figured it easier for you to see it in front of you. So yeah, the sheet in front of you looks like this, says School Safety Grants 2018. Mr. Palito asked me to just give you an update because we've had a lot of grants come through, and you might have read about some of them in the newspaper, but want to make sure that everyone's clear on what we got and what we're applying for. So this table includes all of the safety-related grants that we've applied for and received over the past four months. I want to call your attention beginning, the first one is with United Way, and that's kind of loosely associated with Save Schools, walking school bus and such, but that went to the United Way to support some of our efforts. But starting with the next one, the PCCD grant, that's a Pennsylvania grant the City of Erie applied for, and we included a piece for Daryl Craig's salary. As you recall, Mr. Craig receives a salary for his work with the Blue Coats. That was paid previously by PEPs through a grant from the Erie Community Foundation that ran out, so we were looking for another funding source, and I asked the city when they were going after this gun violence reduction to include it, and it was granted. So that $35,000 will come to us so that we can continue to pay Mr. Craig's organization for his work. And stop me at any point if you have questions. The next one, PA Safe Schools. Every year, PA Safe Schools offers two grants, actually three, one for equipment, one for projects, and one for school resource officers. We did not apply for the school resource officer one this year, but we did apply for the equipment and project grants. The equipment grant, we requested $20,000 for radios. We did not receive that grant. But the project grant, we requested $12,000. That will cover ART training and sanctuary training at Emerson Gridley for the students there, so we received those funds. The next two are federal grants. The BJA is an office of the Department of Justice. We applied for two grants here, and I want to say, a lot of money became available for school safety, but it was very specific in what it could be used for. So the first one there is for technology and reporting. We applied for and received $192,890. That will help us with some of our communication pieces and some marketing, which I was really excited about. We can even get some billboards or do some paid marketing to encourage our families to use these tools. So that was a great, I was really glad to receive that this year. Then we received for the mental health training grant, $72,575. That will cover the purchase of the second step curriculum. It's a social-emotional curriculum. I know they use it at Piper Burley. I think McKinley's using it as well. We'd like to expand it to all of our elementary schools. And then training in restorative justice practices, as well as some school resource officer, that's the NASRO. We'd like to hold a school resource officer training here in Erie next summer and invite others to participate, including our own officers. The next grant we received, the City of Erie applied for and received, another federal grant, that's the Cop Stop the Violence Grant. That went to the city, $176,244, but you'll see the asterisk there. All of those items, they put in for us. So we will receive funding to cover a new PA system at Erie High, an access control system, that's a swipe card system at all of our schools, tags for that swipe card system, and then they receive some funds for police training. And then the last two, PCCD just released. This is the big Save Schools money that the governor announced in this year's budget. So those grants are due actually this Friday. We will apply for two. The first part, it's called the meritorious application. Basically, any school district that applies is guaranteed $25,000, so we'll apply for that. We will use that for radios, and Mr. Brockman knows, we get a lot of requests for new radios, new walkie-talkies, so we'll use that $25,000 for those. And then the part B is competitive, so we'll be applying for equipment to cover what's at the bottom of your page with the two asterisks, door locks at Erie High School, blinds at Erie High School in Grover Cleveland, and then camera and PA system upgrades at many of our schools. And that grant, our max we could apply for is like 5.9 million. We're looking at about 4.3 will be our ask right now. Any questions for me on any of those grants or?
Just who are the walkie-talkies or the radios allowing to communicate between whom?
Within the school, staff within the school.
Okay, not with the county system as it's set up above?
No, so the county system created, they have a new radio system that ties in. We did receive some radios to communicate. We wanted more, that's what we asked for. We didn't receive that funding. Those radios are very expensive, so I think our priority for this grant will be the intraschool, intraschool focus.
John, who will be trained under the BJ mental health grant? Are we training all of our teachers or are we training?
For restorative justice, I actually worked with Ms. Ryan at Piper Burley because some of her staff was already trained in the intro, so I think our idea would be to get some people to go to the next level training and get train-the-trainer training. That's what we wrote in so they could come back and train the rest of our staff.
Great. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have the next thing.
Yep.
Okay. Just very briefly, I met with Mary Jane Keating the other day. I think she had reached out maybe to one of you and you referred her to me. Mary Jane is the chair of the Erie County World War I Centennial Commemoration Committee. As you may know, this year, I believe, is 100 years since the end of World War I. The committee would like to install a plaque on the side of Veterans Memorial Stadium in recognition of the centennial anniversary of World War I. I did tell her that from time to time, we hope to do some renovation at Vet Stadium, so we would prefer not to put anything up that couldn't be removed for renovation or cleaning. She said this would be a bronze plaque affixed at the corner of 26th and State. So she came to me to just find out what permissions she needs, so I wanted to let the board know, and then maybe Mr. Walker could let us know. I don't know if there needs to be a board resolution or how that would work.
Or do we just poll or?
I would think that at the next meeting, we should have a motion to approve installation of a plaque of one of your facilities so it's properly documented and you don't allow somebody an opportunity to misinterpret the precedent.
Okay.
They hope to unveil the idea on Veterans Day, which is November 11th, but they won't install and unveil the plaque until Memorial Day. That's their timeline. So if you can get it on for October, great. If not, I think November probably is.
If you so desire, Mr. President. If you could get us information, we'll get a supplemental agenda item.
Sure. Okay.
Thank you.
Consider it done.
Thank you.
Brian, LERTA, which changed.
Yes, so as we mentioned at the last meeting, we kind of shifted our focus on LERTA away from the commercial and more towards the residential piece. And really, why we did that is because, first of all, it really is cost prohibitive of us to participate in the commercial side of the LERTA, but as we talked about the residential, it was a much smaller piece of this. We felt that it would assist the average taxpayer, and the other thing that I really liked about it with the push with Downtown Development Corp. and Nick Scott's development on the Bayfront and some of the comments by Erie Insurance and some of the other employers down there, there's a need for marketplace, market housing, and if we were able to encourage some development of those type of properties, we would attract more people to the downtown, more people with better-paying jobs, which means more earned income tax. So we started moving down that path, and we met with the mayor and his economic development person, Chris Groner, and kind of put together a framework that we felt was going to work on that. We also talked about, on the commercial side, sunsetting that job creation part of that, where some of those larger developments are currently getting 90% reduction on their LERTA for 10 years because they're providing jobs. Our big concern with that piece was there was no guarantee those jobs would be downtown or in the city, so we were really kind of providing this job development piece, and it was benefiting some of our municipalities outside the city of Erie. So we talked about sunsetting that in a couple of years and making the overall LERTA for commercial more standard, consistent with what it is now, but standard across the city. I was ready to bring you that proposal tonight, but late this afternoon, I received a call from the mayor. He met with some more business leaders. They're still wanting us to consider a commercial LERTA. They have a couple other proposals that they would like to bring to us to consider. This is not the first time we've heard this, but at this point, I'd like to put that on hold so that the mayor has a little time to work with them to bring us something to consider.
Thank you. Capital Projects Funds?
So as we've been talking about our financial plans, one of the things that we have been discussing is maintaining a fund balance of approximately $8 million. That would be enough to allow us to pay our bills on a current basis and give us a little room for some reserves. And anything in excess of the $8 million surplus, then we would propose being transferred to the Capital Projects Fund, and that would give us some money to work with before we had to borrow as far as working on our buildings moving forward. So tonight, I'd just like to get the board's permission to move ahead and start to put things in place to get that Capital Projects bank account up and running. We're going to need your authorization to approve that bank account, so we'd like to move ahead with that because our audit will be done here very shortly, and we will be coming to you with a recommendation to make that transfer.
Okay. Oh, you need that right now?
If you're okay, if we can put it on as supplemental next week?
Yeah, let's see.
Okay. Thank you.
Board retreat?
So we've been talking with Mr. Petroni and Mr. Zagby about how we're going to move ahead. Our architects are wrapping up our facilities plan. They anticipate having that done here at the end of the month. We'd like to talk about that, as well as some of the curricular needs that we're going to be recommending, as well as the overall budget picture with our financial plan. So we think it's going to take a lot of time and is going to require some deliberation with the board, so what we're proposing is to put together a board retreat at the end of the month. We're thinking of Saturday, and depending on if the architects are ready, either Saturday, October 27th, or Saturday, November 3rd, we'll bring the architects in, have them present, and then spend some time, allow you to have some time asking questions about the facilities plan, present some information on the curricular piece, and then kind of bring it all together and talk about what that's going to mean for our budget moving forward and what kind of tax increases we would need to actually support those recommendations. So if everybody's comfortable with that, we'd like to move forward and start to get that scheduled.
Yeah, it's, this is something that they need some answers to put them in a direction and move forward for the budget and the financial plan, so it's important that we do have the retreat and are able to discuss all this, so.
I would prefer October 27th.
What did she say?
I prefer October 27th.
So is Darlene, Darlene won't be here on the 3rd?
I may be out of town. I'm not sure. I have family.
100% know I'm going to be out of town on the 3rd.
Okay.
I may be on the 27th.
With?
If it's not definitely for me.
If the architects aren't ready on the 27th, will October 10th work?
November 10th. I will have the meeting at the Mary's.
Okay.
Sorry.
I'm in a position where my daughter's husband just got a job in Connecticut, so I'm not sure which weekend I'm going to have to be in. It might be the 3rd, maybe the 10th. I don't know yet. I'll let you know as soon as.
I would try to shoot for the 27th.
Okay, we'll try to shoot for the 27th. Okay.
It's usually what they do, something like?
Yeah. Mr. Petroni just wanted me to remind everybody that because we are going to be deliberating during this, that this is going to be a retreat that would be open to the public. So we'll be sharing out the information and then having a discussion on how we want to move forward with all these pieces.
Thank you. Any other questions on that?
Picture of a great session?
I would, yeah. A few hours at least, yeah. Yeah. Anything on new business?
Just that adoption of school district related policy series 600 financing. I'd ask Mr. Walker to just briefly remind the board why we revisited that, why we revised that, and why we want to have something on the record.
Thank you very much. Yes, we have two sets of policies that are on the agenda. The first that Mr. Harkins, the chairman of the Policy Review Committee, has indicated is the 600 series. That is our finance series of policies. We've adopted some of these piecemeal over the last few months, but this is more of a comprehensive approach. These policies update the financial policies of the school district, everything from identifying fiscal objectives to budget preparation to federal programming and everything in between. The, it is important for the school district to adopt these policies at this point, as the school district will be undergoing a bond review at some point, a credit review, and to have these policies in place prior to that review is going to help us shore up our position. This is why we're pushing to have these done. They have been reviewed by the Policy Review Committee, Mr. Harkins, Mr. Fabrizi, and Mr. Spiegel. We made the edits that we had discussed. The only policy that currently isn't being pushed forward out of that grouping, there's two policies. One is 611, which is purchases budgeted. Brian is taking a look, Mr. Palito's taking a look at that in light of a purchasing manual upgrade. And then also, the school board had previously adopted the responsible contracting regulations. That is one that we've put on hold for now. Mr. Fabrizi asked if that might be discussed until November, when he's able to be here to have that conversation. So all the other policies are in place, and they are on the agenda. If there's any specific questions, Mrs. Feeny, I know that you had asked for a hard copy, and we provided that to you. Do you have any specific questions we could help?
I did. I was just wondering, under 602, when, and it talks about the indexes, and I'm aware that when we go to increase the rate higher than what we're allowed by the state, we have to announce that is our intention. And exactly what we're going to be doing in January, according to this document, the budget options, that's where it was unclear. That the first business meeting in January decided budget option to be used, and one was called accelerated budget process option, and the other one was called board resolution option.
So typically, what we do is we start in December and bring you a real preliminary budget, and the whole purpose of doing that is to determine whether or not we may need to go over that Act 1 index or not. And if we've determined that we don't have to go over that index, then we can adopt a resolution saying that and send it to the state, and we don't have to enact the early budget process under Act 1. If we determine we need to go over the index, and that would necessitate going to the voters, we have to do the early budget process, submit that to the state, and make sure that we have everything in place for the primary so that that question will be put on there. So that's really the decision at that point, whether or not to go, we're going over the index or not. And there's never been a situation where we've had to go over the index, so the last several years, we've just recommended that we adopt the resolution and move ahead with the normal budget process.
And has the state changed the index at all, or is it the same as it was last year?
It's changed every year. So it comes out in November.
In November. I thought it did change every year. The only other thing was, I think I found a table.
Oh, please.
Under four, below four.
Which budget number or policy number?
602.
Okay.
Under number four, as a component of budget preparations, the superintendent and controller shall notify the budget of the appropriate index. Should that be board, or are we notifying the budget? Of the appropriate index to be used in limiting tax increases for the budget year.
I think that would be board.
I don't quite see where that is in there, but if you could.
Two, three, four, under four, under number four at the top, as a component of budget preparations, in the back, the superintendent and controller shall notify the budget?
The board. Yes, thank you, we'll fix that.
Sorry.
Don't be sorry, I appreciate it. Don't be sorry, I appreciate it.
That was the only question. The only other thing that I thought about was, in an election year, that's a lot for new members of the board to, to take in in a very short period of time. So I know we had a retreat the last time, which I thought was beneficial to you and I, I don't know if that could be something that becomes a policy that we, we do that in December. Because it did talk a lot in here about frequent, frequent reviews of the budget. So I don't know. It's just something to be, to be thinking about every two years that we might wanna do.
Yeah, we usually do. I mean, well, we usually, especially when new members come on, we will have that retreat, Tim goes over all that stuff. I mean, I know we've done it since I've been here. You know, we added the part of the budget and get a little more, you know, just to bring you up to speed, which I think we see done too.
Right, which I greatly appreciate.
You know what I mean? Because I think it's beneficial. So I don't know if we need something or not yet.
It would, it would be up to the board. If you were to do some sort of policy indicating a retreat, I would suggest that we look within the Zero series of policies, which are the local board procedures that are also on the agenda this evening. I know that there are some procedures in there related to policy, or excuse me, related to retreats and board review.
And if the board doesn't feel that that's necessary, just, just to make note that it's very much appreciated as a new board member, that that's a lot for, for you to take in, in a short period of time, and you're making extremely important decisions. So I think it would be helpful to any new board member to be able to have some kind of service to, I don't know.
No, I, I agree with what Dar is saying. It is a lot, and I don't know that it would necessarily need, need to be the whole board. It's very similar to what we did when we went over the, the most recent stuff, where we had maybe some breakout sessions. I know that, but you guys, you're doing more work. But it, but it is nice because then you can ask the questions and maybe not feel intimidated because you're in front of the entire board. You're the new person.
And the camera.
And the camera, right.
Don't understand. You can think about it whenever, but we don't need to answer right now.
So the committee vet and that committee, it was Mr. Fabrizi, Mr. Spiegel, myself. And for this financial series, the superintendent and Mr. Zagby sat in. In between us, there were questions raised and adjustments suggested and made. A few things were yanked. The solicitor has brought all of this into focus and he has deleted some things that he called to our attention and got our okay on. And he made some suggestions for changes. But this is basically an update of some existing practices and policies and consistency organizing it. It's nothing to fear, I don't believe, because we have raised the questions that we thought you might. But any, if we adopt this this week and it's on the record, and if there's ever any problems, disagreements, or modifications to be made, the majority of the board wants to do that at any time and certainly can. So it's not something we lock ourselves into without any means to revisit. It's just an update that's there to, as the solicitor said, for financial reasons to have in place going forward. So anyway, I have to so review Darlene for noticing what got by three board members, the superintendent, Mr. Zagby. And it's the teacher in there. Teacher, you corrected papers.
Yeah, there you go.
That's because she's got nothing to do with it.
Are you kidding me?
So as the committee chair, are you saying to adopt these, correct?
Yeah, and thank the solicitor for all of his work. And we, we, there was a lot of give and take and it was healthy and necessary. And this is revised and refined and going forward, it can always be modified if the majority of the board finds the need to.
Okay.
So Mr. President, that's the 600 series, the Zero series, local board procedures. We have reviewed in depth before. Provided updates to the committee. Information's been out there. That's on the agenda as well. Then we also have policy 717, which is generally referred to as the cellphone policy, where we've, we've, we've known that we've been in a position where we had to formalize the procedures that the school district has used in the issuance of cellphones to, to employees. And that has, that's what that policy does. So that's been reviewed as well and that's being put forth for the board's consideration.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a few more items under new business, if that's okay. I'd like to draw to the attention of the board. The first of which is the PNC Letter of Credit. There is a, well, we have our annual letter of credit that we enter into every year. Brian, do you want to address it more specifically or do you want? This is a renewal and extension of the existing letter of credit that is in place with PNC. It has a lowering of the amount that it's going to cost. I would assume that is because of the consistent financial position of the school district. And so there's a production, a reduction in the letter of credit fee from 145 basis points or 1.45% to 135 basis points of 1.35%. This is the second year in a row that we have seen a reduction in the cost for that extension of the letter of credit. And the letter of credit is an obligation that we have to have that in place as a result of the prior swap that the school district...
And just as a reminder, that, that agreement costs us approximately $400,000 a year. We, as we begin to start discussing another bond issue for our, our capital needs, there's an opportunity right now to actually roll that swap into that bond issue and save about $400,000 net. So we, when we do come to you with the recommendations on the facilities, we will be more than likely recommending that as well. Not only is it going to save us money, but the bond rating agencies do not like swap agreements, so if we can get out of that, that's another thing that we can do to help improve our credit rating, which will help improve our ability to sell bonds at a lower interest rate moving forward.
Do you want to use this as an opportunity to discuss what our swap management plan is and the proposed policies that were before the board?
Sure. No more swaps.
That is literally the swap management plan in, in there. The other item that is on the agenda that I wanted to raise your attention is a suggested resolution approving the renewal of the Montessori Regional Charter Schools charter. Mr. Brockman, did you want to speak to that?
Sure. So on July 2nd, Montessori Regional applied for renewal for their charter, which would start in 2019 and extend through 2024. Between myself and the attorneys, we requested about 35 documents, ranging from assessment tours that the school did all the way up and down the gamut of how their business office operates in just about every facet of the charter school. After a lengthy review and request for additional information, a tour was given to us of all of their facilities. And based on the six reasons for non-renewal, at this time, we don't see a reason to not renew their charter. Part of what, I think part of the conversation today is about the timing of all these things. There are certain legal timelines that have to be met. And in order to not have a hearing on Monday, the 15th, I believe we are asking for approval of, from board to send a letter to Montessori stating that we are going to be renewing their charter and it will be formally voted on, on the 17th.
It's an attempt for us to try to avoid unnecessary legal costs and time to have a hearing on the 15th. It's merely a function of when the board's meeting is going to land on that Wednesday. This is a regional charter with Mill Creek Township School District. Mill Creek Township School District has authorized that a similar letter be sent to Montessori indicating that they have every intention of renewing the charter and rather than have a hearing, they're gonna hold off until their meeting, I believe, on the 20 seconds. So, so long as there's a sufficient number of head nods from you that we can move forward with renewal?
Yes.
We'll send the appropriate correspondence.
Thank you.
Those are, that wraps up the items that I believe were of sufficient significance to draw specifically to your attention here this evening.
Yes, I just wanted to report to the board, as the architects and their, their structural engineers have gone through our buildings, they, they had an opportunity to get through Wilson, Wilson Middle School. And Wilson has a very large coal bunker in the back of the building covering the parking lot. After having their structural engineers walk through there, they, they determined that they had some concerns about larger vehicles or delivery trucks driving over that. No, no immediate danger to students or staff, but they did have that concern. So out of an abundance of caution, we did block that area off so that, that vehicles cannot drive on that. So we, we have them working on a solution for that right now. They, they're feeling that the best solution in the long term is to fill that bunker with cement, believe it or not. So we have them designing that piece and we intend to bring that to you here in the next meeting or so. The, the preliminary cost is 300 to 400,000 dollars, but we'd like to get, get moving on that sooner rather than later so that once spring hits, we have everything in place to really take care of that permanently.
I'm not a structural engineer, but fill on rocks.
They, they looked at fill and the, the type of cement that they pour in there, it would be less expensive to do that because they don't have to tear up the parking lot to put the fill in.
Wow, that's a pretty big pit.
It's a, the bunker is the whole length of the building.
Anybody have anything else before we go to executive?
Didn't we talk last month about the change order at Jefferson? Or do we not? I wondered if that was the contractor board for the change over at Jefferson.
I can... So that change order was actually a reduction in costs. We had allowances within the contract that we could have used. We chose not to use those allowances, money to return to the district.
Anything else?
Just curious, where's the Fairville subdivision? On the third page, there's about six or seven properties in that county repository and they're all in the Fairville subdivision. I'm just curious where that is. It's not important for anyone.
I was wondering if I could, because it's a lot.
I'm sure it's an old designation and no one uses it anymore, but I just was curious where it was.
We can find out.
We have, we have a very effective filter here on the internet and I'm limited from searching.
Nope. Don't worry. That's all.
If anything else, we'll recess for about five, 10 minutes and move on to Executive Session Number Three, for Personnel Matters.